Counsel to order, and may I ask that you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued with the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill, absent. Toledo, absent. Park.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan, absent. Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Verimus.
Here.
Hill, absent. Shenko.
Here.
Ten present, four absent.
Ten present, four absent, and we have a quorum. Moving on to item three, we have a special proclamation, and Stephanie, if you would join me over at the podium over here. All right. This evening, I have a special proclamation. It's a special month, and I'd like to read the proclamation. I have with me Stephanie Worgen, who's the president of the Elmhurst Pride Colective, Scott Mathina, pastor at Elmhurst Church, and
Judith Barrientos.
Judith Barrientos on the board also. All right. So, whereas the nation, this nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law, whereas the city of Elmhurst is dedicated to the acceptance of all of its residents regardless of age, beliefs, disability, identity, race, religion, gender identity, sex, or sexual orientation, and whereas the city of Elmhurst is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family, and whereas Elmhurst lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ residents are welcome and valuable members of our community, and Elmhurst is dedicating to fostering acceptance of all of its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and general gender identity, and whereas the CDC recognizes that LGBTQ teens are at a higher risk to be victims of violence and have increased suicide rates, and it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and educators and community leaders. Now, therefore, I, Scott M. Levin, mayor of the city of Elmhurst, encourage all of our community residents to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists and to celebrate our diversity by celebrating our LGBTQ friends, neighbors, and children, and do hereby proclaim the month of June as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the great, seal of the city of Elmhurst to be affixed.
No, I think we said everything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Can we get a quick photo?
We can do a photo. Do you want to get your group up here or over here?
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Very good. We'll move on to item three, item four, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone that has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the city council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum to speak this evening?
Yes, Mayor. We have Bruce Kelcey.
All right. Mr. Kelcey, if you'll take the back microphone, you have three minutes. Please state your name, address is optional.
Mr. Mayor Levin and counsel, good evening. My name is Bruce Kelcey. That's K-E-L-S-E-Y. I'm an attorney in Lyle, Illinois. I'm here tonight representing Mr. Neil June, who has property on North York Road, approximately the 700 block of North York. He's across the street from Mariano's. My concern tonight is that the current design features on your roadway improvements, in particular as it relates to Mr. June's property, unfairly treats him as it relates to the design features as opposed to the treatment given to Mariano's. And while I'm also, you appreciate, maybe over 50 years ago, I did work as a forestry department here in Elmhurst, so I do appreciate your beautification project, having done many of your trees here. This design feature, as it relates to Mr. June's property, is a design flaw which is going to create some issues. Those same issues are treated differently as it relates to Mariano's, and I believe that that, in one sense, creates a situation that should not be present. I've worked with Kent Johnson. I have to tell you, he's been wonderful in terms of cooperation. I can't tell you how much he has helped me at least understand the issues. The problem is this: the access points that Mr. June's property has as opposed to Mariano's, Mariano's now giving the benefit of having a left turn going into their property, the southern portion of their property, they are going to be allowed to make a left turn across three lanes of traffic. Mr. June is not given the same privilege on his side of the property. He's on the east side of York Road. That design flaw is going to create a huge safety issue, in my opinion. The city did secure an engineer to review that project and did traffic studies. The traffic studies reflect that there are triple the number of accidents coming out of Mariano's as opposed to Mr. June's. This design feature is only going to increase that issue, as the left turn going northbound on York is going to have to cross a left turn lane, two lanes of southbound traffic, and then enter the project right around where the median is being designed. It is going to be a huge safety issue. It will also become a choke point for those people going northbound on York Road who just passed the stop-and-go light at Belvin. So, in my opinion, I would ask this council, if you can, to direct your staff. I'd be glad to meet with them. As I said, I've met with Mr. Johnson. He's made a couple of minor changes. I would hope that you would look at the design features of this and look at the safety issue as opposed to just the beautification issues, and you will find that this project should be redesigned to that effect. If anybody has any questions, I would be more than happy to answer those questions, and thank you for letting me speak this evening.
All right. Thank you. It's our practice not to respond directly during public comment, but staff will know what to do. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that has signed up for public comment?
Yes. Todd Benson.
Mr. Benson, you know the drill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, elected officials, and city employees and community. A couple of items. I'm here first with a York and Valette hat on. I want to thank city manager Grabowski and assistant manager Mike Cope for helping to get city flags up on the light posts down at York and Valette. I want to also very much thank, from the city, I'm going to mess up his last name, but I'll just go with Larry P., superintendent of the facilities, who helped out tremendously as well on getting everybody in order. The York and Valette Association and the farmer's market will take care of the expense, and all of Elmhurst will get to see flags just like we see in downtown and on Spring Road, and that'll be added next week. On that note, this Wednesday morning at 7:00 a.m., you are all invited to come to your farmer's market. We start at 7:00 a.m. Wednesday mornings through the end of October. The farmer's market has been in Elmhurst as the only farmer's market for 50-plus years. It's a great market. It's supported by the community, and we appreciate you coming out and being at the market for that. And one more hat that I have to change is to move down to Spring Road. Spring Road Business Association, for the 20th year, will begin Music at the Gazebro this Thursday evening. I truly hope that you come out to enjoy a great Elmhurst community event. Our opening performance will be Kathy Richardson. I need not say that she's an Elmhurst resident who gives to the community, who's helping to make performances even better in Elmhurst. Come out this Thursday night, and then come out for five additional shows, all of them supported by the local businesses on Spring Road. I thank you very much, and have a good night, and thank you very much for doing what you're doing, which is taking care of our city.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Clerk Tamer, other?
Yes. Peter Doty.
Mr. Doty? Please state your name and address is optional.
My name is Peter Doty, and I reside at 559 South Cedar Avenue in Elmhurst, and I've been a resident here for about 13 years. This is my first attendance at the meeting, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, and thank you to the rest of the community. The reason I'm raising the topic today, and the topic is the NiCor gas, I think it's 24-inch gas main replacement project that's taking place over south of, south Poplar, if you're looking at the Valette-Poplar intersection, and then up into the Cedar Avenue Niagara area. That's the area of town it's taking place in. There was some consultation back in February on this project, but the reason I'm raising this today is that it does impact the homeowner's responsibility for sewer line replacement. Some of the community or most should be aware, the homeowner is usually responsible for the sewer line from their house out to the sewer line in the middle of the street. Well, the gas main, they're digging down to about 16 feet and putting in a two-foot pipe. They're putting it underneath those sewer lines from the homeowner's side out to the main sewer line. And in the consultation, there wasn't a lot of detail from the NiCor side, so there are concerns from the homeowner's side, i.e., what does this do for our liability? Many of us have 1950s ceramic pipe. We don't have PVC pipes. These are subject to damage from the removal of soil around them that might be apparent during this work that's taking place now, but also it may impact reliability of those sewer lines over the next 12 months or next five years. Those lines have not been uncovered for 70 years in the cases of neighborhoods like mine, and specifically on my house. So, the two areas I'd like to bring to the attention of the council, and I understand it's no right of response today, is engagement on this to represent the homeowners and residents of Elmhurst, because it is, it impacts our liability for both any fixes they do during the event, because my actual sewer line was damaged. I only went outside and saw by chance they'd replaced it just for a broken section, but I have no details of any liability from NiCor gas. I have been in contact with them, but I have not received a written description of liability, what they will cover. There are other people, and certainly myself, think, well, there's one bit that might be broken in this pipeline, but what about the damage to the surrounding sewer line either side of where they've actually dug? As I say, 70-year-old pipes, mostly ceramic, there may be other damages, and I would like to urge a response at a later date from the City Public Works for the, I guess, the terms of the permit provided to NiCor for this work, and the kind of guarantees we can get in writing as homeowners for any liability to immediate fixtures, but also any responsibility changes for the disruption caused to these old sewer lines that may then collapse in one year's time when all the contractors have gone, and we have no recompense. The average price for a replacement of a line like that could run a homeowner to anywhere between, say, $14,000 and $20,000, so this is not insignificant for the average homeowner in those areas connected. So, the reason I raise sewer lines specifically is it was not really addressed in the NiCor consultation, and it seems like the kind of topic that should come to the attention and have something in the city minutes that the Public Works Committee has considered and can provide advice to all affected homeowners. So, that's the core of what I'd like to bring to your attention. I'm happy to engage with you. There's also been significant disruption for traffic works, but I think that will be brought to the attention of various local aldermen for that area if that connection is provided. So, that's the framing. Mostly, it's the sewer line concern, and I'd like to know the next steps for interfacing with who I'm supposed to interface after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Those are the people who have signed up this evening for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign up but would like to make public comment? There being none, we will close public forum. We'll go on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Nudera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to encourage our Elmhurst residents to display their American flags on Wednesday, June 14th, in honor of Flag Day. June 14th is the anniversary of the American flag being adopted by a resolution of the Second Continental Congress on June 14th, 1977. Our nation's symbol, the American flag, will be 246 years old. Thank you.
Alderman Nudera, other announcements? Alderman Veramus.
Thank you, Mayor. We had the 30th annual Spring Road Pet Parade a few weeks ago. It was a huge success. We had over 200 people participate, not including their pets. So, thank you to the Elmhurst Fire Department and Police Department for coming out. Mayor Levin was there with his dog Lola, and it was great. We had a great time, and if there are any pet parents here, I have extra swag bags in the hallway, so please help yourself to one. Thank you.
Alderman Veramus. Alderman Bram, then Alderman Bastido.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I want to announce that the Elmhurst Police Department will be hosting a third ward neighborhood roll call meeting tomorrow, June 6th, at Michigan and Crestview at 7:00 p.m. So, encourage all the residents to come out and meet their police officers and learn a little bit of what's going on in the neighborhood.
Alderman Bram, Alderman Bastido.
Yes, I wanted to announce that due to lack of quorum, there will be no Public Works meeting on Monday, June 12th. That's one week from today.
All right. Other announcements? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either to further discuss or to vote against? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to please read the consent agenda.
7.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on May 15th, 2023. 7.2 accounts payable June 5th, 2023. 7.3 referral Kennelworth Traffic Control. 7.4 report referral residential chicken keeping. 7.5 report ex officio appointment to Economic Development Commission. 7.6 report Elmhurst Park District Fall Fest. 7.7 report Rock Salt Contract for the 2023-2024 Winter Season. 7.8 report 2023 Asphalt Rejuvenation. 7.9 report Elmhurst History Museum Gloss Mansion Chimney Repair Engineering. 7.10 report Large Avenue Parking Deck Repairs. 7.11 report South and West Water Tower Rehabilitation Project Professional Engineering Services. 7.12 report 2023 Crack Sealing and Seal Coating Program. 7.13 report Brush Hill Road Improvement Construction Bids. 7.14 An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a license agreement by and between the Summit Infrastructure Group, LLC, and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.15 A resolution approving and authorizing the purchase of additional licenses and accompanying maintenance fees for the Tyler Technologies EnterGov platform for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.16 A resolution authorizing payment to industrial organizational solutions for consulting services for the fire department lieutenant and battalion chief promotional process. 7.17 A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2023 concrete pavement patching project for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. And 7.18 A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2023 pavement striping program. 7.19 A resolution regarding the release of certain closed session minutes. And 7.20 A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and release by and between the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, and David Gibson for the resolution of civil litigation.
Clerk Tamer may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Bram with a motion, Alderman Shenko with a second. Clerk Tamer?
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Toledo, absent. Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan, absent. Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill, absent. Shenko.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, four absent.
Ten ayes, zero nays, four absent. The consent agenda is adopted. Item eight, reports and recommendations. 8.1, Mayor Levin, I have a number of issues here. The first one is, you'll have to indulge me, it's a little bit lengthy. There has been some recent issues regarding the property at Roberto's, which has come back to light again, even though it's a couple of years past. The York Township assessor, a few months ago, or maybe two months ago, announced his decision to lower the assessed equalized valuation, or the EAV, of the two houses that are adjacent to the Roberto's parking lot, and that has generated some new debate. But I think an understanding of some of the nuances is being overlooked. First, with respect to the properties adjacent to Roberto's, the assessor has adopted her own policy on discounting EAV by 20% for any property that is located adjacent to a parking lot, irrespective of any facts that are unique to that property at issue. I take no issue with the assessor's policy. It may be right, it may be wrong, but it's a uniformly applied policy. And must, however, be recognized that the fact that the assessor discounts by 20% of the EAV is not directly related to what the effect will be on that particular property. It must be also recognized for us as a council that a conditional use application is a legal proceeding that starts before our zoning and planning commission. The decision of the commission must be based on evidence, and neither the number of residents protesting nor layman opinion about value is considered evidence. Property values must be based on expert opinion offered by licensed appraisers or other professional real estate people. A property owner's testimony on what he or she believes will be the effect of a parking lot on any adjacent property is not legal evidence. The only evidence introduced to the commission with respect to the parking lot's legal effect on property values was Roberto's expert, who testified that there would be no significant impact on property values. The commission voted to approve the conditional use permit and allow Roberto's to build the parking lot. The decision was based on the evidence introduced before the commission. A decision by the commission is then sent to the city council for final action, which is initially assigned to our own development, planning, and zoning committee. In my 12 years on the council, it's been my personal belief that the role of the DPZ is to perform a review of the commission's work to make sure that everything is in order. The DPZ, in my opinion, should not substitute its decision for that of the commission unless it finds that there are new circumstances, such as a negotiated resolution between the residents and the objectors, the project developer, or that something has been overlooked that was significant. And importantly, no new evidence may be heard by the DPZ. The only evidence that may be considered is that which was introduced before the commission. It is proper, or it's improper, for a DPZ committee member to substitute his or her own common sense view instead of considering the decision of the commission and the evidence introduced. Again, when we do a conditional use proceeding, it's a legal proceeding, and we may soon see one of our decisions appealed, and if it is, it goes to the Circuit Court of DuPage County, and then ultimately, it may be appealed to a higher court beyond that. In this case, the city council properly reviewed the commission's decision and the evidence introduced before it, and then applied the commission's, upheld the commission's report. The Roberto's neighbors did not introduce any legal evidence before the commission that there would be a significant impact on property values. Moreover, the assessor's policy of reducing EAV by 20% on any property located adjacent to a parking lot would not itself have been considered evidence of an impact on property values. Finally, the commission, the DPZ, and the city council each recognize the seriousness of their work and their obligation to balance the rights of the applicant against those of adjacent property owners. As with many zoning cases, the Roberto's case was difficult, and no one knows it more than I do, but it was handled in an entirely appropriate manner. Now, just as we did with the sober home issue that we faced a couple of years ago, we brought in experts to train us on housing issues at that time, which was very helpful in helping us understand our role and the decision that we would make. This fall, it's my intent to bring in experts to train the city council and the zoning and planning commission, and no matter how expert I or others, including the commission members, may think they are, I think this will be very valuable. It will help us as we go forward, and it will also help us, and the emphasis, in addition to general zoning use training, will be on conditional use applications, which are probably the most difficult applications that we deal with as a council. This training will be open to the public and will help us all better understand how those proceedings occur. So, thank you for indulging that. Something a little more fun. Okay, so, item two, for those, we had a couple aldermen who stopped by last Sunday after we've had such a difficult time at such a wonderful event known as our Town and Gown Old Fashioned Old Timer Baseball Event. They announced that there was going to be a traveling trophy for the first time, the Cottage Hill Cup, and I jokingly said to the president of the university, I don't know if it's going to travel too much. Well, it's traveling right away. So, Director Olberg, first, I want to thank you for a wonderful event. Weather was beautiful, which you can't take credit for. Participation was great. It was a lot of fun. There was everybody there. But what do you have for us that you might want to bring up? What, is that the Cottage Hill Cup? Oh, let's have a look at that. All right. Thank you. Well, despite Alderman Erby suffering great personal injury and broken glasses in the first inning, we were not only one, but it was 18 to 9. So, it was quite a showing, and it was greeted with humility and good spirit, as it must be under the old-fashioned baseball rules, so, by the people at the university. So, congratulations to the city. I'm not sure, we might put it on top of the roof here. We'll find someplace to put it where the university can see it. So, that was some good news.
Stay right there.
Could stay right here for the rest of the year. I hope it doesn't obstruct anyone's view. So, that's item two. Item three is some more good news. I was contacted by Senator Susie Hilton-Glowiak. I had talked to her and Representative Glenn Ladish-Douglas during the session about needs of Elmhurst. As the alderman may know, we've spent a lot of time talking to our legislators, even in Springfield, about increasing LGDF. And with all the problems that there have been in the budget for the state this year, we still got a, was it a half a percent? I can't even remember. It was about half a percent, which, you know, last year, we got a tenth of a percent. So, we really had some local legislators push hard for us to make sure that this topic did not just die off. So, I thank them, and even more so, I had talked to our senator and rep about our needs for things such as our fire department, our aging fire engines, and I was called at the last week of session and told that a grant, money has been earmarked, as they say in the business, for us to apply for a grant that's only for Elmhurst for $850,000 to be used for the purchase of a new fire engine, which is quite significant, and we're most appreciative for our legislators who work that for us. So, that will be, I think we decided it was going to be yellow? I don't know.
I don't think we made that decision yet, Mayor.
We didn't make that decision yet. All right. Lime green. Next, I wanted to say, for those of you who, many of you who were there at the Memorial Day Parade, I want to thank our Veterans Commission. It was another wonderful event, and a very big crowd at the actual ceremony, and I hope that in future years, people come and see the ceremony, because that explains what our Memorial Day Next, I wanted to say, for those of you who, many of you who were there at the Memorial Day Parade, I want to thank our Veterans Commission. It was another wonderful event, and a very big crowd at the actual ceremony, and I hope that in future years, people come and see the ceremony because that explains what our Memorial Day celebration, if you'll call it that, is all about. But it was, even without the cannon this year, we lost the cannon, but it was still a wonderful event. This Saturday, is it Sunday or Saturday? Special Kids Day?
On the Saturday.
Saturday. Between noon and 4:00, Special Kids Day is hosting an event here at City Hall. All of the departments will be participating. We did it last year, and so for children with special needs, they came out and had a very wonderful time. Every department set something up for them to do. We even had some mock city council meetings and let them vote on things. So any children who would be interested in that, it'd be Saturday from noon to 4:00. Two more items. At the last Dupage Mayors and Managers Committee, I was acknowledged, I was, I guess, previously elected as the vice president of the conference, which is good for Elmhurst. And city manager, you're deputy director of?
Two committees.
Two committees.
Yeah, Budget and Operations and Transportation Technical.
Right, and city manager's been on transportation for a number of years, so that's good for Elmhurst, too. And lastly, because of the vacation and the fact that our council meeting would fall on July 3rd, we have a number of aldermen that will be out. We will not be meeting on July 3rd. We will not invoke the Reagan rule and meet on July 4th, which would probably kick us -- I don't know what the dates are, but we're not meeting. There may be a need for a special meeting of the council immediately before our committee meetings on July 10th, but that remains to be determined. That is what I have, and to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To continue on what Mr. Benson talked about with live music, this Wednesday will kick off the City Center Live Music Wednesdays, and it's also the opening, or the, I guess, the ribbon cutting, so to speak, of the Umbrella Sky Project for the third location at the 255 City Property and Stage. And we have a number of other department items that are going on this Thursday. The Heritage Foundation will host an opening night for members of the foundation for the new exhibit at our museum. And on Saturday, in addition to the, I'm sorry, on Sunday this weekend, Police Department, the Police Benevolent, will host a Cops and Bobbers at Eldridge Park, which is fishing for kids. So if you have kids, please bring them out. It's always a great event. I know there's awards for different categories. In addition to that, the Elmhurst Express Trolley started over the weekend. That runs Fridays and Saturdays through September 16th. And along with that, we have some new marketing materials, which are at your chair tonight. We have the Elmhurst Express Trolley brochure. We have a lapel pin and a pen with our new marketing materials that Cassandra Schreff and her team have worked very hard on. So take that with you, please, and if you want more, you know where to come to get that. And then finally, we were notified that in the Finance Department, we received two awards from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. For the 16th year in a row, we've received the Outstanding Budget Presentation Award, and for the 33rd year in a row, we've received the Comprehensive Financial Report, or the Audit Report. So thank you to Christina and Ryan and your team for keeping that streak going.
Thank you. All right, I hope this doesn't cast any glare on the TV. I'll just move a little closer. All right. All right, any other reports and recommendations from elected officials? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine resolutions. Item 9.1, Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the Brush Hill Road Improvement Project, Project 22-02 for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. See item 7.13.
Thank you. May have a motion to put 9.1 before the council. Alderman Bastido with a motion, Alderman Bram with a second, Alderman Bastido.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so on the consent agenda was report 7.13 regarding an approval of a reconstruction project on Brush Hill Road, which, by the way, came in under budget. But because the city is committed to finishing before school starts in August, because this is a route that's used for Timothy Christian School, and because it's also a road used by Elmhurst Hospital, we'd like to go ahead and suspend the rules, allow for approval of the resolution at the same meeting as the report, and that's it.
All right, the rules have been suspended, and we, any other discussion on the resolution? Are there being none? Clerk Tamer?
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill absent, Toledo absent, Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan absent, Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill absent, Schenko.
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays for absent.
10 ayes, 0 nays for absent. Resolution 9.1 is adopted. Item 10, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? There being none, may have a motion to adjourn. Alderman Bram with his sidekick, Alderman Schenko, seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.